Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, January 17, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. At City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The regular meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order. Next on our agenda is any communications from the public or committee liaisons to P&amp;Z. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item, however, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. I see no one from the public at this time. So, next on our -- next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our December 4th retreat, January 3rd meeting, and the Howard subdivision partial replat number two?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Appears to be unanimous. Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R-2010-09, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is discussion regarding the difference in joint public hearings and separate public hearings and public hearing notice requirements. Is there a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, second. Aubrey, would you like to give the staff summary of that?
Yes. Actually, Becky can coordinate that, but do you want to do it? No? Okay. All right. So, this, the ordinance subcommittee has been, has discussed this a little bit, and it's been a discussion over the past couple of years, just about, I think some things have changed as far as process here at the city, and so there's been discussion about the possibility of going to separate public hearings with city council and planning and zoning versus the joint public hearing process that we do right now. So, just a little bit of background, so state law allows either joint public hearing or separate public hearings. So, our local ordinance, we've adopted the joint public hearing process, and with that, that's when we get an application, we send out the property owner notices, we post the, publish the newspaper notice, and post a sign on property for zone changes. For changes to the zoning ordinance, we don't have to post a sign on the property. If that were to change, and we had separate public hearings, basically, we would still do all the same things, but our notice would notice planning and zoning's public hearing, and then city council's public hearing would be on a different day. So, the subcommittee listed out some pros and cons. Actually, let me back up just a little bit. Several years ago, city council met twice a month on first and third Mondays, and city, and planning and zoning meets first and third Thursdays. So, there was more opportunity to get in front of council for ordinances to be approved and things like that. And then also, previously, we had outside council, and so we were able to have more than one city attorney, you know, represented, and so planning and zoning could have an attorney upstairs when city council was meeting downstairs. So, those are the two biggest changes. We definitely don't want to hold developers up, you know, in the process. That's not the intent. The intent is just for planning and zoning on, especially, most, I guess, most of our zone cases are pretty cut and dry, but if we have a planned unit development or something, you know, we want to be able to give city council, you know, good input, do our research, and give them, you know, a detailed, good, you know, recommendation. So, the pros and cons that the subcommittee came up with, the pros were that separate public hearings allow the presence of legal counsel. All meetings would be recorded and televised. We wouldn't have our meetings upstairs in our conference room. The council chambers provides a formal setting and accommodates more attendees, and a regular scheduled meeting date is less confusing for applicants, and also helps commissioners with your time, too, and then allows chairman to be present, or to present the commission's recommendation to city council. So, a couple of cons would be increased timeframe for applicants by an average of 23 days, and then requires staff and applicants to return on a different day. So, an applicant would have to come for both of the public hearings. So, on that page, also, there's other cities who do joint public hearings and/or separate public hearings. So, Pearland does joint public hearings, and we do, but other than that, League City, Missouri City, Frisco, and Webster do separate public hearings. And then it details like how many times their city council and their planning and zoning commissions meet. There's also a sample schedule in your backup material that shows, you know, the difference in the scheduling for this year. The flow charts, and that's about it. So, any questions?
No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I have a point of clarification on Pearland?
Yeah.
If you can stand at the podium, you can.
Just to point a clarification on Pearland, they do have a joint public hearing at their council meeting, but when that hearing is closed, P&amp;Z meets the following Monday to discuss whatever the item was, unless it's, they call it a CUP, it's like our PUD. Then they actually have council and P&amp;Z discussing at the same meeting after the public hearing, but you'd never have P&amp;Z meeting while council is meeting in Pearland. So, I'd just like to clarify that. So, it is a joint public hearing, you're right.
Okay.
But P&amp;Z doesn't go to another area of council or the city hall and meet like we do here, like we go upstairs.
Okay.
So, they do still have a separate P&amp;Z meeting, and then they come back, and much like us, they stopped doing the meeting, P&amp;Z and council meeting at the same time because typically, council had already closed out their meeting before P&amp;Z got back with their recommendation, which is a problem we run into as well. So, I just want to clarify that. So, it's a hybrid of a joint public hearing, I guess would be the way to say that.
Okay. Thank you.
Rich, it's you.
Oh, yeah. So, our committee kind of met and talked about this. These were the pros and cons, but I wanted to put it in front of the rest of the P&amp;Z to see if there's some things we missed. This was just kind of a brainstorm of why you might or why you might not.
So, I have a couple of.
Separate these? Yeah?
I have a couple of what I think are cons, and just let me know if I'm reading this correctly. So, with our current schedule, we would basically meet 65 times.
No, it would be a 65-day duration from the time of the first application to where it was approved, if it went through smoothly.
Oh, that's what that is?
Yes, and that compares to the 90 if and the other.
Total days, too? Okay.
Approval days.
All right.
But it is a perfect segue to something I wanted to talk about. This, I just noticed it now, and apologize for bringing it up now as opposed to beforehand, but this presupposes that we would meet, the P&amp;Z separate meeting would be the first Thursday. Is it not allowed that we could do it on the second Thursday for the preliminary hearing for this?
The reason for having it on the first Thursday, we would hold all of our public hearings on the first Thursday. That way, if we had a complex application that we needed, that we weren't comfortable taking action on, we have the second meeting in the month to take action, because we have to have our recommendation to city council within 30 days. So, if we had all of our public hearings on the second Thursday, which would make the timeframe shorter.
Right.
But you would have to make a recommendation that night.
So, you're doing that to give some flexibility just in case?
Mm-hmm.
Because what I was thinking is, if you assumed we used the second Thursday, then everything becomes 14 days shorter on the combined, on the separate units, and then instead of a 90 to 65 difference, it becomes a 76 to 65, only 11-day difference.
Yeah. Well, and the other difficult piece of that is city council cannot hold their public hearing until they get our recommendation.
But our recommendation almost always comes out the same day that we have the JPH.
Almost always.
Sorry?
Almost always, but, I mean, if we had, you know, another Friendswood Trails, PUD, or...
When we had Friendswood Trails, we canceled the upstairs meeting just because the room was too small, and so presumably, that wouldn't happen in this case. You know, we went up to Friendswood Trails, and there was, you were there, Sally. There were so many people, we couldn't, it was out of control, and David said, you know, we really need to do this in a more, a larger venue so we can actually properly talk to the...
Well, but I think we even, we discussed it at a couple of, at a couple of meetings before we sent our recommendation to city council.
Oh, is that right? I didn't remember that.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. This way, you can table the item if you need to. So, if the developer is missing a piece of information that you want, instead of denying him, you can table it and let them come back the next meeting. Otherwise, they can't come back for 90 days. So, it would be...
Yeah, right. So, we did table. I remember tabling things just for that reason, so that's right.
Yeah, so it would be safer to have the built-in extra two weeks than to possibly deny them for something they could remedy, and then they're set back three months.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
No, I am open to, I was interested in anyone who wasn't part of our subcommittee, if there's something else that we're missing or anything that, you know, should be weighed in here in terms of pros and cons.
So, my, I did have two things. So, second, second thing was, if the person that's coming forward with something, if we do not have the joint public hearings, does that mean they have to come in and explain the same thing twice? That they have to come in to...
Yeah, and that's the require staff and applicants to return on a different day. That is, the applicant, they're not required to be here, but we always encourage them to be here for their public hearings.
Right.
To speak, you know, in favor of their project. So, yes, that would require the applicant to be here for our public hearing and consideration, and then for city council's public hearing and consideration.
And then maybe for the second reading, so...
Yeah, for a second reading, and then if, you know, if we didn't take action on that first Thursday meeting, and, you know, if we tabled it and then considered it again on the third Thursday, then, you know, that might be another, so potentially four meetings for them.
But it also gives people, public comment period, a second one as well, right? By having the two public meetings.
So, our group, we got together, we talked about this. The big hitters were being able to have legal counsel at our meeting, because that was a serious issue potentially, being, we sometimes struggle without the attorney there. It seems like the issues always come up when they're not there, it's one of Murphy's laws. And the other was being able to feed back the thinking process to city council on issues that come up, so that they don't just get a cryptic, yeah, P&amp;Z thought it was okay, and maybe, you know, just a short brief, we can actually explain the thinking, because I think city council counts on us sometimes to go into more depth. They have a broader breadth of things to handle. This is our narrower scope. We should be going into it more depth and have some thoughtful insight to share. So, that was our thinking. And that's why our committee, Dick and Marcus and I, kind of thought this was, this was the right time to push this. Marcus, did I leave something out?
I think he covered it.
Okay.
So, your recommendation was to do this, then, right?
Yeah, yeah, and from what I understand, we would kind of get a consensus today, and then work on, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aubrey, work on getting some formal wording changes to the ordinances, and then working it with a joint meeting with the city council, and it would go through the normal process. It'll take a couple of months to do, but first, before we even actually stepped out, we wanted to test the waters and see if we all agreed, or if most of us agreed, this was a good idea. And I can speak for Dick, he's not here, but he was supportive.
Right. All of the proposed changes are part of our review package now, right? There's not additional changes that we need to go make?
There's not any, I just highlighted the sections of where the requirements come from, there's not actually any changes in it.
It's not redlined.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we would have to change the wording in the zoning ordinance.
From what I understand, the way we had it five years ago, whenever the period was changed, you can kind of steal that wording and use it again, it's probably still good of how we did it before with separate.
I think...
Because your point is this is going back to...
Yeah, I mean, I think we're reverting back to something that was done in the past, and so the wording that was there in the past should be a pretty good go-by.
Should be easy to change.
It's not going to be hard to change at all, no.
Brett?
Sure. I got kind of two perspectives on this, one is a P&amp;Z commissioner and one is a developer. As a P&amp;Z commissioner, I love this idea. I think the intention going to joint public hearing was a good one a few years back, that's when council met more often. It's one of those ideas that looked great on paper, but sometimes in reality, it didn't work out, especially now, because many times council will convene before we're finished deliberating, so the applicant has to wait 30 days anyway. And as commissioner, I can't stand going up in that room. It makes me uncomfortable, especially on a contentious issue. It's not fair to the public, they need to be in a more formal setting. I love having our attorney with us, especially on contentious issues, and the cameras rolling, so more formality. So, as a P&amp;Z commissioner, I'm all for this. As a developer, it doesn't bother me at all. As a developer, as long as we know the rules going in, the timeframe, we're good with it, so that's fine. As a developer, what you don't like is when things get delayed that you weren't expecting, like when council convened before, and you got to wait another 30 days, you didn't expect that. So, I don't think adding 23 days, that's not going to kill a deal, especially as long as the developer knows at the DRC meeting that this is the schedule you're going to follow, and you're good. So, I'm all for this.
Great. Eric, anything?
No, I don't have anything. I guess I just have one question, is staff okay with this?
Yeah, I think we are. It'll, it'll be a little bit of a change, but I...
I mean, you think we're going down the wrong road?
No, I don't think, I mean, I think the pros definitely outweigh the cons.
No, I agree. It's one extra meeting for staff, but, yeah, pros outweigh the cons, not having legal counsel and the room upstairs, which everybody loves, sometimes doesn't accommodate everybody, and, you know, there's no TV, there's no dais, there's no podium, so I think it's probably a good solution.
And sometimes you need the city engineer up there, and a lot of times, he's stuck down here, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's true.
True, too. Good point.
Now, honestly, the emails that we have to send to applicants are, okay, we're, you know, the public hearing is going to be downstairs in city council, you know, in council chambers, and then when P&amp;Z gets up and leaves, you need to leave with them, and then after P&amp;Z considers your item, you need to go back downstairs. I mean, literally, you have to explain that in an email, so it would just be a lot cleaner.
Fair point. I do know that there have been cases where people didn't understand that, they stayed back down here and didn't realize their whole case was being heard upstairs.
Yes.
And so, it's a good point.
Yeah.
Marcus, anything else? Lisa?
Anything else? No, I think it makes, it makes perfect sense. I think it helps on transparency. It helps if anybody wants to, you know, can't make the P&amp;Z meeting, they can watch it on video, gives them another chance. I, ups and downsides, but I think, as you said, the pros outweigh the cons.
Okay. Good. I think that gives kind of everybody a feel.
Okay, so we'll get a plan going forward from here, whether to, I mean, like I said, it won't be a big deal to draft the changes to that at all, and so we'll figure out when we can have a workshop with council to see if they're on board with that as well.
Aubrey, could we put these changes in the same ordinances with the, the, keep Friendswood beaut, not keep Friendswood beautiful, our scenic?
Not with those, because we had to do newspaper notices the week of the 14th.
So, these would be on a fast track, but a different fast track?
Yeah.
Might be behind the other?
Yes, possibly with the downtown stuff.
So, it does bear the question, when we first thought about it, there was going to be discussion tonight and then a vote at our next meeting. Is that still the plan? Is there any reason maybe we can vote tonight and be done?
It was just a motion to discuss tonight, but I think we have consensus.
Okay, that's all, okay, just double checking.
So, this doesn't change our meeting, our current meeting days of first and third Thursdays?
That is a great point. That's a great point. Our next item is discussion regarding Planning and Zoning Commission meeting days and times as meeting days. So, thank you. Is there a motion to discuss that?
Motion to discuss.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey or Becky?
So, this was another idea back when, when we were discussing change into separate public hearings, there was also the idea to change our meetings to Mondays rather than Thursdays, so that all of our, and it honestly, if we, if we keep the joint public hearing process, I think the Monday meeting thing was better, because we're constantly moving our first Thursday meeting to Monday, and so I think if we keep the joint public hearing, it would make more sense to move our meetings to Mondays. With the separate public hearings, if you went from first Thursday to the, we wouldn't want to meet on the same night as council, so it would have to be second and fourth Mondays. I mean, if it knocked from Thursday to Monday off of that time, you know, the days, but I don't know if that would be really worth it. So, like I said, it was just a matter of getting all of our city business meetings on Mondays instead of having to reschedule all the time. So, I don't know that...
And one risk to that approach, moving to a Monday would be if council slips, then that sits right on top of our meeting, and we would have to adjust as well, so it's a perturbation.
And they did that this month. They moved their meeting from the 7th to the 14th, so they would have been on top, you know, our meetings would have been on the same night.
But we could have moved ours to the 7th, because they left that open.
There's a lot of Monday holidays.
Right. One coming up.
True.
So, do we take these separately?
Yes, these are...
Yeah, they're separate items.
Completely separate items.
I'm for wherever's easier for staff. We just add another meeting to staff folks, so wherever's, wherever staff thinks the best for them, nothing, there we go. I'm good Tuesday through Thursdays.
And I, you know, we could, you know, if we want to bite this off in chunks, maybe try the separate public hearing thing for six months, you know, and then reconsider the meeting days later and see, you know, if it makes sense to move.
Yeah, it gives a little background. At one time, we had these two linked, and then realized they were completely separate items that really, they may affect each other, but probably are independent. So, we wanted to kind of see if anybody had heartburn with Mondays or Thursdays and had strong preferences, where, you know, hey, it's a real problem to come in on Thursdays or to come in on Mondays. I personally don't have any issue either way, so it doesn't affect me, but just kind of taking a poll of the, of the P&amp;Z to see if there's some benefit of one day over the other with one or more of us. And then what Aubrey said is right, we'd be, every Monday is kind of simple for people to keep up with, potentially, because saying, oh, these guys are Thursdays, these guys are Mondays, but this time they're Mondays, and it's also Monday, more simpler you can make it. So, it was just basically an open discussion to see if somebody had strong feelings about one day versus the other.
But if it causes more overlap with city council meetings, then, I just don't, I haven't looked at a calendar to see how often that really comes up, but...
July, usually it's just July. I'm not really sure why we move January, but generally, it's just July, because the 4th of July, it almost always happens.
I think January 1st was on a Monday.
Yeah, Memorial Day will always be an issue with the last...
The week before, city council staff is preparing documents, and it was a holiday week, so I think that's why they bumped that one back.
Labor Day will always be an issue, and so...
Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, I mean, you've got...
We need the first Monday of each month, and those are later in the month, but you are right about Labor Day and 4th of July, those are the only two standing, and then sometimes January.
Yeah. Well, but if, if we move P&amp;Z to Mondays, those will start, all of those will affect us. I mean, it'll, it's just about every month. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a fan of the Monday.
Okay. That's good feedback.
I think Aubrey was right. I think the reason Monday was even on the table is because we were thinking we would keep the joint public hearing, we just wouldn't send P&amp;Z upstairs, P&amp;Z would meet the following Monday, that was just to take out some of the lag. So, if you all are seriously considering having the separate meeting instead of continuing a joint public hearing, then I think you're right, whatever works best for everybody else. But I think that was the only reason we considered the Mondays.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, but council, I don't see us changing from the first Monday, I don't, I don't think council's going to change that. So, you're right, there probably three times a year that we might push ours to the second Monday, which would land on top of your meeting.
Yeah, it became a preference after we discussed the joint public hearing, so, yeah, it's just a preference, does it work out better for anybody in here, but it doesn't, it sounds like there's kind of a few conflicts and thought. Eric?
No, either works for me, just, I just would hope we would settle, you know, for the year, so. And I like, I like Aubrey's idea, let's, let's change to joint public hearing, see how that goes, and then perhaps...
I do, too. I like that.
I'm good either day, Saturday or Sunday.
Marcus, did you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good, and I'm pretty much in the same boat. I think they're a little bit hesitant to go to Mondays. I know Commissioner Clark down there, who can't represent his perspective today, he was less warm on the idea, I think he's got a conflict as well, and I don't want to speak for him, but I will communicate, he communicated that to you, so you're not the only one that's got some reservations with Monday.
Aubrey and Becky, does it create anything from a staff perspective, moving Monday to Monday?
Or leaving it on Thursday.
Or leaving it on Thursday? Is one better or worse?
We had talked about it, well, I guess a couple of years ago at this point, it doesn't affect us either way, so it is, it is a preference on your end, moving the, changing the public hearings, I think kind of eliminates the need for the Monday. But, yeah, Dick said that it would be a little bit of an issue for him, but he could work it out with the holidays, that even if council's not moving, Lisa's right, because if we, if we already, our regular meeting schedule falls on a holiday, it could be an issue.
I mean, consistency from, you know, the city business being done on Mondays, I could see something like that being a positive, but it sure sounds like there's more negatives to making a change, there's no reason we have to.
I have one positive.
Ah.
Staff has every other Friday off. They could leave on a Thursday night if you didn't have a Thursday night meeting. Just go throw that out.
Versus staying with us here.
That is one positive.
So, if you did it on Monday, that would free up their Thursday night, just in case you were thinking about staff.
Of course we are.
But it's every other, every other Friday, are you lined up so that...
It flip-flops about every, it flip-flops about every six months, so like tomorrow's my day off, Monday I'm off for a holiday, but I'm here tonight because of the meeting.
If I had to pick a day, I'd pick Tuesday, because I like everything done early in the week.
Right.
So, my favorite day would be Tuesday, but I really don't care one way or the other.
Okay, it sounds like there's some pros and cons, but not a lot of drivers.
Right, yeah. Tuesday, we've got ZBOA, so.
All that's right.
Just to make the point, like if, if we did go to Mondays and a holiday did fall on our meeting day, we would make a standing rule that if our meeting day fell on a holiday, we could, you know, bump it back the next week or something. We did, we had that standing rule with ZBOA, if a holiday falls within their meeting week, that we move it up a week. So, I mean, we can work around that, but...
I like the idea of making one change and then reevaluating to make another.
Yeah, I think that's the consensus.
That's what I'm hearing as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Great. Good.
So, no, there's no need to continue this discussion? We'll bring this up via agenda in the future if needed?
That's, that's the consensus I'm hearing.
All right.
I'm hoping to, we'll squeeze this in on one of the workshops with city council coming up, and just make sure that, you know, they're on board with it, and then we can draft changes and move forward with zoning ordinance change.
Just a little insight. The Drainage Subcommittee is going to workshop with council in March, so that's probably going to be a pretty full workshop, so you may want to try to avoid that. That's, when I heard the February thing, I, that might be in your favor, I'm just throwing it out there.
Okay, all right. We were hoping to do downtown.
I know, in February.
Yeah, or no, March.
March.
Yeah.
That's staff issue.
We'll talk about that tomorrow.
Our next agenda item is consideration and possible action regarding future Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates.
So, our next regular meeting is Thursday, February 7th, but we do have an application,[1766.01] application and then the Scenic City subdivision and zoning ordinance changes that we advertised for the February fourth meeting, um, so if we want to consider moving that February seventh meeting to the fourth, uh, we can do that. And then the second meeting in February is February twenty-first.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Is there a motion to move the February seventh meeting to February fourth?
Uh, so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous, no?
That's gonna start at seven, right?
Um, so our joint work session will actually start at possibly four-thirty. Sometimes if, with work session, if we're the only work session, they might move it back to five, um, but the, it, the, the joint work sessions are taken place like at four-thirty or five and then the joint public hearing, um, won't take place till seven.
So do you need a quorum of us or...
Yes.
So we are having a quorum at four-thirty?
At four-thirty.
I'm not gonna, I can't commit to that right now.
You need a quorum for the work session?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So Monday, February fourth.
Cause the work session's on the scenic...
Need us here at four-thirty.
Yes, on the Scenic City, uh...
That's really the ordinance Subcommittee could...
Right, that's really main, there's, but we have to have a quorum for, okay.
I just feel like I've been thrown under a bus right here.
Which, we voted on those changes at the last meeting here and so we're gonna, we have joint public hearing and possible, and recommendation and first reading of the ordinance schedule for that night, but we just wanted to workshop it with council that night to explain to them why this is before them.
And what I think I heard before is that it might move to five, but right now we should figure four-thirty and you may give us some good news that we have a thirty, thirty-minute grace period on that.
Yes.
But, but that's regardless of whether we met on February seventh or not, because that, we'll just move that meeting till, till later.
Yeah.
Afterwards.
Well, yeah, the February, so any agenda items that we would have for the seventh would just be in the regular portion af, after we get done down here.
Got it.
So, and, and we need that four-thirty quorum, right? Otherwise that impacts our schedule targets.
On the Scenic City.
Yes.
Cause we, we're up against it, right Becky?
Okay, thank you.
It's in my calendar now.
I mean, I think I can make it.
I can make it. Yeah, I'll make it.
Okay.
We should have a quorum.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is communications. So commissioners, any, any agenda items that you would like to, you would like to add to future agendas, general comments, any updates on liaison assignments? I'll start, Marcus, start with you.
I, I don't have anything, no, I did not attend, uh, the last liaison meeting that they had last week, so I don't have anything to report there.
My liaison meeting is tomorrow, so, so I haven't anything new, but I did see a message come out that when the tree giveaway has moved...
Yes, uh, they postponed it a week.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And I think it moved to January, January twenty-ninth?
Twenty-second, twenty-third.
Week for, twenty-sixth, yes.
Yeah.
Jeff, could you come to the podium and say that?
Touche.
So that was the twenty-sixth of January.
Yeah.
Sorry. Paybacks are gonna be bad.
Remember, he edits everything, so...
Yeah, right.
And that's it, I'll probably have more next time.
Good, Rich?
No, I have nothing.
Brett?
Nothing.
Eric?
No, sir.
I didn't have anything as well. Next is a, any updates on the ordinance Subcommittee?
We didn't have any more meetings since our last meeting, so no, I have, I have no more, no updates on that.
Planning Subcommittee update?
Nothing, we'll kick that off when we finish the downtown stuff.
Okay, and speaking of the downtown district, I, I had mentioned last meeting that we had one more meeting, that's occurred and now we have one more meeting tomorrow, so, I'm not gonna make any more predictions.
It's the third last meeting we're having.
Right, yes, right, right.
So is, is it that you want to wait until you mature all of your recommendations or do you not want to leak any information until...
It's all a work in progress at this point.
That's fair.
It's a reasonable question.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, and Sally, anything, city council?
Yeah, having been on P and Z prior to being on council and I was, Richard and I served together, that transition time when we used to have legal advice upstairs or downstairs and then once we switched to full-time attorney, I feel y'all's pain as well. Didn't like being upstairs and certainly didn't like being up there without legal counsel. The other thing, now that I'm on council and I happen to be y'all's liaison as well, I get a little, um, concerned that I want to hear your comments and if I don't have benefit of hearing your comments, then I don't think I can really represent P and Z to the council like I might need to from time to time, so I'm very happy that these will be separate meetings and, and that you all aren't upstairs, well, we're meeting downstairs, I just, this makes me very happy, so thank y'all for working through this. I know it's going to be an additional meeting for staff and I appreciate the dedication, but I just feel like we'll be of better service to our citizens, I mean, that's what we're really here for, is represent the citizens and I think we'll be able to do a much better job of that by not meeting at the same time, so thank y'all for doing that very, very much and letting me talk.
Thank you, thank you for your help. And now to staff, Aubrey?
The, um, December, and I tacked on November, cause I realized I hadn't sent out November, uh, DRC reports, we only had four meetings in all of November and December, um, but that was in your backup material, if you have any questions about any of those items, let me know.
Uh, no, sir, nothing new.
Okay, with that, we stand adjourned.
Oh, oh, I did have one other thing, sorry, um, I sent out an email earlier this evening, um, we received a letter, um, our chairman received a letter from some West Ranch residents, um, there's some concern over a property owner potentially, um, purchasing a little portion of the, of a detention, uh, detention pond reserve. I sent you some exhibits, the original plats in your email, um, it's not, um, it's not an uncommon process and it's not, you know, they're not taking away from the detention pond, it's, um, some extra space around the detention pond and the owner, I guess, is just wanting to like square off their yard, it's really rounded. So both, it would require replat of two of the sections of West Ranch, a partial replat and then a full replat of another one. The developer is aware of the process and it would, it's also a residentially zoned property, so we would have to send out property owner notices to everybody within two hundred feet and within that original subdivision, um, and they have the opportunity to protest and, you know, it'd have to come before you guys, so, um, the letter didn't have a contact information on there, so if anybody hears anything, if they'll send them to Becky or myself, we can, um, help explain, um, the requirements.
So what is it, is it, is it a large piece of land, is it...
It's a, just a single family lot that's, it, I'm not sure, do you remember what the square footage of extra land there was, it's...
It couldn't be more than, probably not even a tenth of an acre, um, those lots aren't very large to begin with and it's, the shape of it, it kind of curves on the edge and so they just wanted to square it off.
It would have a straight fence line rather than a rounded fence line.
Honestly, I think that's what their goal is, is to be able to put in a straight fence.
Yeah.
Um, because it's not even, it's not even just a curve, it's a curve with like a couple of little jogouts, it's very decorative looking, um, but it would be difficult to maintain and it's going to be difficult to maintain on the developer's side, cause they're gonna have to, they're not gonna be able to get big mowers in there.
So this would be an agenda item on a future...
If they make application, it's a, the...
They go forward.
Owner approached the management district and that's all that's been done.
Before this actually became law, it would come before us as a separate item.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anything else?
That's it.